All right. All right, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. The first thing is to review and approve the agenda. And I think one thing that may come up is just some changes to the consent agenda. Instead of having the January minutes be its own separate item, I think we're gonna put that into the consent agenda unless folks, actually unless, unless we want to keep them separate.
All the January are out of the consent agenda on what I downloaded.
Yeah, and John had suggested that maybe they should be in the consent agenda, but.
They usually are. I think that was just an oversight. The other oversight was also that the liquor meeting is the liquor commission was not in the, in the consent agenda.
I want to talk about the January 6 minutes, so I disagree they stay out this time.
That's fine. That is okay, just that I, worth checking on. Maybe we can move all but the January 6 minutes into the consent agenda, since there's other January minutes in there. Is that okay, Donna?
Sure.
Okay. Okay. Other than that, I don't think there are any other changes to the agenda, unless folks have any objections to that. Okay, all right, so without objection, we'll consider the agenda approved. So the next thing is general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public or the council to address the group as, on some topic that is otherwise not on our agenda this evening. If you have a comment on something that is on our agenda, then the time to do that would be just adjacent to or as a part of that agenda item. But if there's something not on the agenda that you'd like to adjust the council regarding, then now is the time. Donna, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to mention the school board did make a decision on the SRO officer, and they voted not to bring it back. They had already taken it out of its budget. There was a little bit of confusion because on their agenda it just said presentation, but they went ahead and they made a decision. It was a very lively report and discussion. I feel the, me, the takeaway was that the police, we really need to work on community relationships and working on, of course, all of our biases and racial issues, but also to build a relationship with people, we need to be proactive. And so I heard just a lot of fear and discomfort that used language on the national scene, applying it to us. And so I feel if we want to stand out, then we really have to work to stand out and to build our relationships in the community accordingly. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? And Cameron, are you seeing anyone?
Ma'am, if you would like to speak and you haven't unmuted yourself, you can raise your hand or throw up a reaction.
Okay, all right, I'm not seeing anyone either, so we are gonna move on. So the next item is the, the January 6 minutes. So I don't know that there's much. And John, if you want to speak to them, but I know Donna has a comment about them. But I'll give you first, first dibs, John, if you want to say anything about them.
Well, I don't have them in front of me. Those are, I think, the ones for the one that I sort of received notes for, but I, I looked over it, but I, I don't know, Donna hasn't contacted me about what could be on there, so I have no idea. I was just trying to pull them down right now.
Yeah, it's all good. Go ahead, Donna.
This is no mistake on your part. I just, when reading through them, I just felt that the mayor had made comments, an opening statement to that meeting on January 6 about the Capitol event that happened that day. And I felt it was really important that we have maybe a clear statement if we could insert that into the minutes. And I did mention to the mayor that I was going to do this. I really feel that sometimes there are statements that I feel need to be in the minutes and not just in the recording. And I felt that way about the statement that the mayor had done at the beginning of the meeting. I would add a motion to add her statement. Everyone heard it. Unfortunately, I don't have it in hand, so if you feel uncomfortable about voting on that, I can get it in hand for the next meeting.
Second, your motion.
And I, I do have it, so, since Donna did let me know that she was interested in this, I did dig it up, though I did not get a chance to send it around to everyone, but theoretically, if anyone would like it, I'm happy to send it along. Okay, so there, is any further discussion on, on this point? Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say I support this as well. I think it makes sense, and I don't think it needs to circulate because, I mean, your statement is what it, what it is, but I think it is one of those, those moments and statements that's worthy of marking specifically in the minutes with the exact wordage.
Yeah. Fair enough, and yeah. Any other comments? Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Sure, just a quick point of order. Are we gonna approve the consent agenda before we go into the appointments?
Well, so the consent agenda is actually not until after the appointments.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Fair, fair enough. Fair question. All right, so I guess the first question I have is if anyone is here, who is up for one of these appointments? Hanif, John, Lynn, Holly, Scott, Stephen, or for the Transportation Infrastructure Committee, Hanif or Christian? And I don't actually see any of those folks, to my knowledge, on the call.
I don't either.
Okay, if I'm wrong, we would love to hear from you. Okay, so. All right then. Seeing that as nobody is here, I guess we won't be taking testimony on that. But we, I imagine since we do need to make some choices, that we probably should go into executive session. So is there a motion?
I move pursuant to 1 VSA Section 313 that we go into executive session for the purpose of considering a government appointment.
Are, are we gonna consider both committees?
Yes.
That was my, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and there's a second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and opposed? Okay, so we are all gonna duck out of this meeting, but this line will stay open for those who are interested in rejoining as, or seeing the rest of the meeting when we rejoin. All right, see you in a bit. Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So move.
Okay, motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and opposed? All right, is there a motion?
There is. I will make a motion that we appoint the following individuals to the Complete Streets Committee: Stephen Page, Scott Richardson, Holly Fowler to seats on the Complete Seats Committee, and John Snell. And then Holly Fowler and Hanif Nazr Ali as alternates to Complete Streets Committee, and that we also appoint Hanif Nazr Ali and Christian Meyer as alternates to the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee.
I'd make a correction, I would second it.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Donna.
Lynn Bottel is the alternate instead of Holly.
Oh, my, my mistake. I, so Lynn Bottel as the alternate and Hanif Nazr Ali is the alternate to Complete Streets and Holly to the full seat.
Yes, I second that.
Okay.
Hold on.
Sorry, was there a question?
No, no, sorry.
Okay, all right. All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, and opposed? Okay, so the motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for stepping up and your service in advance. All right, so now I think we are up to the consent agenda. So is there a motion regarding the consent agenda? Oh, which, by the way, also includes the liquor licenses that John circulated earlier. Yeah, I think that's it.
I move the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I had the one question on an item there. I don't know if we need to pull it off, but in Cameron's COVID report there, I see like indoor winter sports are back. And I didn't know if there had been any discussions on the school board whether Montpelier was gonna actually engage in the indoor winter sports yet. I think some school districts are, you know, are setting out that, but, you know, I, I certainly have some concerns, but.
So I can tell you that the winter sports are moving forward. There are kids playing basketball. They have a game coming up, which they are very excited about. So.
All right.
Take it for what it is. Yeah, right, exactly. I realize that may not be, I don't know if that spurs any further questions for you, Connor, but.
No, I, I mean, I don't think it's our call, but, you know, with the outbreak at the, like, ice rink pretty recently, I'm a, you know, a little nervous and haven't played, like, varsity basketball. It's a, you know, pretty, pretty hands-on sport, so. Little concerned, but not our call.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's, we'll keep following it, and if we need to make our own adjustments, I think that is within our purview. I think, right? As it pertains to safety. All right, so there's any, but you're not pulling the item off the agenda, right? Okay, so any, there's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed? Okay. All right, so the consent agenda passes. All right, so we have an upcoming art, public art project, and I think there are some folks here who may be prepared to talk about that. So, yeah, I guess I'll, I'll turn it over to, to that crew. I see.
Hi, I'm Sabrina Fadail.
Hi, Sabrina. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, so I'm here representing Montpelier Alive Design Committee, and Rob Pitcig is also here for, representing the Montpelier Art Commission. I've been in classes all day online, so I'm bleary-eyed at this point. So, anyway, the community quilt project, the tumbling blocks. I'm hoping you will have all seen flyers, and I'm wondering if you all have any questions that need answering. We've been approved, it's fully funded via Montpelier Alive and a grant from AARP, and we have the Montpelier Art Commission approval and the site, and everybody's on board. We're hoping you all are too.
That's great. Any questions? Donna, go ahead.
I'm sorry to say I haven't seen your flyer, so I was wondering what's the date range of the project as far as making decisions?
We will be, um, we're pretty much, we are underway in this, and the deadline for submissions is February 12. And then we will be installing around the equinox. The date isn't pinned down, but we're looking around March 22nd, 23rd as a one-year remembrance of our closed down of COVID and really that impact on life. And so to be able to have a virtual opening at a live, open gallery space where community members can walk through the transit center or drive through and find their artwork. And I have to say, the submissions that have come in so far are stunningly beautiful, including the toddler scribble all over one template, you know, it's just this myriad of fabulous expression from everyone in the community. It's really, it's, it's exciting. So the timeline is that the panels will be installed for a year. And with the arrangement we have made with the Montpelier Arts Commission is that after a year, we will evaluate the condition, and if they're still in good condition and there's nothing, there's no other artwork lined up to take its place, that it will stay up for another year. And so we'll just kind of keep rolling on that. That's the idea. But it is intended as a temporary thing.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Lauren?
Yeah, I, I don't have a question. I just wanted to say, I was so excited to see this idea. I love the, like, something people can safely do, but then it, being able to come together in a communal way and reflect this just really bizarre time we've been living through. So I'm just really appreciative of the creativity and creating community out of, out of voice, right?
I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I mean, I had this random idea the end of November, you know, sitting by the wood stove, wrapped in a quilt, and, I don't know, thinking of being quarantined in community and all of this stuff, and I just wanted to wrap a quilt around this community, and so here we go. Wrapping a quilt around the community, so. I'm, I'm thrilled with how excited everybody's been by the project.
So I have a couple of questions, just to make sure that we're clear. I think you said this in your memo, but who is responsible for the maintenance of the art?
Montpelier Alive.
Okay, and, and so they're also the ones that would make the call as to whether or not to leave it up another, for additional time?
That would be in consultation with the Montpelier Arts Commission, because they may have curated some other artwork to go up, and we'll be in conversation of, does it look good enough to stay up another year? You know, that kind of thing.
Right.
So, and Rob and I both serve on the, Rob and I serve on the Montpelier Alive Design Committee, and he is the liaison with the Montpelier Arts Commission. And so we have a good, good communication back and forth between the two.
Good, good. Any other further questions? Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, not a question, but Sabrina, I, I love this, the spirit, and I love your work, and I'm so thankful for this. You know, I did see the template that went out in the bridge a while ago, and I feel like I appreciate that you're trying to engage the community as much as possible, and I have nothing but faith in what you will create in partnership with Rob and the Arts Commission, but thank you for bringing more art to our city. I love it.
Thank you, Jay, and it's nice to see you again.
You too.
Great. Any further comments or questions? Okay, all right, well, thank you for all the work that you've put into this. You know, taking this from an idea to a reality, this is very exciting, and I think especially like what it means for the community right now is, it's just, it's really like, it's very precious. It's really lovely.
Thank you.
Yeah, so let us know if you need anything further from us.
I will do. Thank you very much.
And thank you also, Rob, for, for your support of this project and for, for being here too, so. All right. Okay, so we are gonna move on then to some potential zoning amendments. This is not a public hearing. This is just informational. And so for this, I am gonna turn it over to city staff, whether that's Bill or Mike.
Gonna be me.
Okay.
So, this, there may be people, this was warned in the paper as a public hearing, so there may be folks who may want to have public comment. It wasn't put on the agenda as a public hearing, though, so.
That's fine.
But we are only required to have one public hearing to adopt zoning amendments, but typically, I, what I do is usually come through and, and meet with you guys first to give a summary and kind of introduce you guys to what the zoning changes are, and then we usually follow that up two weeks later, three weeks later with the, with the actual hearing. So you guys kind of have an opportunity to, to ask some preliminary questions if you have them, but we'll have another opportunity to kind of go through those. In this presentation, I'm gonna kind of keep it more general, keep it, you know, the 50,000-foot, and we'll go more line by line, or whatever you guys would like to do next time. But again, it's, it's always your, your hearing, you're always willing to kind of be flexible with you guys. If there's anyone in the public who is interested in information on this, all the information is on the front page of the city website. On the bottom left, there's a gray bar, which has a number of links, including 2020 zoning amendments. So that is where if anyone is looking for these, and there is a strikeout copy that is available on that page, that's usually the easiest. And I don't know if Cameron, you need to give me anything to share my screen? Nope, looks like.
Yep, you should be able to.
All right. All right, so. The zoning amendments you guys have tonight really break down into three primary areas of change. We had a first set of changes that had come in because we've been talking for the better part of a year with folks in the Saban's pasture, the Saban's pasture development team, and a couple of barriers to their ideas came up. And so the planning commission, well, the, the city talked about these with the Saban pasture folks, and then we presented them to the planning commission, who reviewed them in light of Saban's pasture itself just generally, because this isn't reviewing their, any proposal that they have, and then also looked at the implications across, you know, what would be the impacts on other projects around the city if we made some of these changes? And I'll go through each of these in, in a bit. The, the second group is the housing-related changes, so that was partly due to some statutory changes that were adopted by the legislature last year. And we also made a few other changes that were not statutorily required, but we had felt would make the administration of residential uses a little bit easier. And then, as, as usual, we have a set of miscellaneous changes that are mostly minor and technical that we come up as we discover little, little things in the regulations that aren't quite accurate or aren't quite working right. So the three Saban's related pieces. The first one is in traffic, in the conditional use. So the issue that came up there was how we regulate the, the traffic requirements within the conditional use section and what, although there were some proposals that were made, the one the planning commission felt most comfortable about was removing the, the level of service as a requirement. So the requirement for traffic is not to have undue impacts on traffic, and one of the guidelines was that it couldn't make the level of service of an intersection worse. And this could come up for a number of reasons in a number of places, but obviously, a project in Saban's pasture could have an impact on any number of intersections, and it was felt that it really wasn't the best metric, and it's a metric that across the country people have been moving away from. So California has stopped using level of service as a requirement for traffic studies. We should just look at them in the subjective cost benefit of, you know, if, if a level of service, say, were to decrease by 15 seconds at an intersection, but you could build 300 units of housing or 200 units of housing or 100 units of housing, well, there's, there's a balancing act that the Development Review Board could do, but with the level of service requirement in there, we would be unable to approve that project. And that's not just this project, but any. So that was one. And then we organized it also to clean up what is a requirement, what is a guideline? And so those are in Section 3303. The second area that was a problem is the new neighborhood PUD, which is a requirement, as it was written, it was a requirement for any project in the riverfront district. And that became a problem because it was originally proposed because it was, the original zoning had both the upper and the lower Saban's pasture in the same zoning district. And what happened is, when it got split into two zoning districts, we ended up with the new neighborhood still being a requirement in the bottom of it, but they don't need any of the benefits of a PUD. So usually what it is, is it's a trade-off. If you do more, if you want more density, then you have to do more of these other things. But in this case, they don't need any density bonuses. So they can still do a new neighborhood PUD if they like, but it's no longer going to be required. And then the third change for Saban's pasture was there was, the traffic requirements for subdivisions were different than the traffic requirements for conditional use. And what we did was made them the same. So those were the three. These I'll go through a little bit quicker. These are the housing-related ones that were required by state law. One is in non-conforming parcels, which just has to do with, you now cannot, any parcel with water and wastewater must be allowed to be developed regardless of its size. And that's just a change of state law. The second is in the use table. The use table's figure 215. So one unit to four-unit buildings can no longer be denied for character of the area. That's the new state law. So we therefore adjusted any of our uses that were conditional uses and made them permitted uses. Character of the area is a requirement within conditional use review. So because we can't really regulate character of the area any longer, there's no other requirement in conditional use that really would trigger anything. You know, a four-unit building's never gonna have a traffic impact, and it's never gonna have impact on the facility. So we recommended adjusting those from conditionally uses to permitted uses to meet that requirement. And then there were some subtle changes to accessory dwelling units, such as, under our previous rule, it was only studios and one bedrooms that could be ADUs, and now, under state law, any size, you could have a two-bedroom accessory dwelling unit now. So we had to make some small adjustments. The housing-related ones that are not required, that were not required by that, the residential uses that had been in our current zoning, kind of had some gaps and inconsistencies, and you don't really find these till you start getting in there. Like, we had a specific use of rooming and boarding houses, but it wasn't in the use table. So you have these weird things that just needed to get cleaned up. And so what we did was reclassified all residential uses into three different groups. One are, thinking of them as dwelling units, and this is what most of us think of, your one-unit, two-unit, three-unit, four-unit, or multifamily housing. The second group are congregate living. These are ones that don't necessarily have all of the facilities of a, of a dwelling unit. So they might, it might be a rooming and boarding house. It might be a dormitory where you are renting a room, but you share other facilities like bathrooms and kitchen facilities. And so those are considered congregate living facilities. And then the other ones are these state-licensed facilities like group homes and residential care homes. And this led to some other changes throughout the document. So because we made those changes, we had to make adjustments to these. Um, so because we made those changes, we had to make adjustments to these tables and these figures and in a couple other places. So uh, I can go through these more specifically next time, um, but they're all in the strikeout copy. Um, and then finally, we had to adjust some definitions as we went through those, um, including one po- slight policy change. There used to be in the dwelling units a requirement that every dwelling unit had to be at least two hundred and fifty square feet. That had a, uh, an impact that you couldn't do tiny homes. So we've simply removed that requirement, or that limitation, I should say, um, on dwelling units. Uh, and we had to add or amend a few definitions to reflect those changes. Um, so real quick, our miscellaneous changes. Um, we had to fix some minor changes on the riparian buffers in the natural resource map. These are really, really tiny, but uh, every once in a while, they would pop up. Um, and I can go into those details if you, if you'd like at, at the next meeting. We also fixed the design review boundary at the last round of changes. We went through and moved the design review boundary, and we talked about shifting two properties on Terrace Street. And for whatever reason, uh, five properties on Terrace Street got moved. So um, uh, wasn't caught when we put the map in the warning, and therefore, because the map that was in the warning was wrong, we have to go through and fix it. So this is just to go and put things back to where they were supposed to be, um, from the last meeting. Uh, we added some small changes to applicability. So this is going right to the start of the zoning regulations and what needs a permit. And what we had is some, um, y- you can sometimes think of things in buckets or it's an if-then. So we can't regulate something unless it is considered development. So in this case, somebody was removing um vegetation out of a riparian buffer. But because that doesn't need a permit, even though it's against the zoning, it didn't need a permit, and therefore, we couldn't regulate it, and therefore, we couldn't give a notice of violation. So by putting it in as a trigger, as in the definition of development, we then have the opportunity to look at something like development in a wetland or development in a riparian buffer, or removal of vegetation, I should say, in those areas. So it's a legal, technical thing, but it cleans things up. Um, we also added some rules to make uh reasonable accommodations for ADA easier. Uh, we made a few technical fixes. Um, we had to s- uh, make a strike of, in the sign requirements because it was regulating content, which is now unconstitutional, um, by a federal uh Supreme Court decision. Uh, we made an adjustment to fences that used to be that you could have a fe- an eight-foot fence in, on class-one highways, which could allow someone to have an eight-foot fence um on Route twelve or uh fourteen, uh, Route twelve or Route two, and didn't seem like that was appropriate or what was intended. Um, and a number of these were just cleaning up some other points, um, including adding river hazard areas to the natural resources requirement in, in the new, for new subdivisions, um, which is just a requirement that FEMA has for the NFIP. If we do it, it's part of our community rating system, our CRS. Um, and if we do this, we get more points, and we missed out on those points last time, but it's an easy requirement. It just means if you're gonna subdivide, you have to show us on the subdivision where the river hazards are. Um, kinda makes sense. Uh, and lastly, we um made some ch- other changes to definitions that were not related to housing, um, including definitions of accessory structures. And finally, there is one additional change to add in, um, which might need a motion from you guys, which um, after we had the hearing for the planning commission and it got sent to you guys, I was working on language for our revised, excuse me, E nine-one-one regulations. And um, what we found out was that the state rules for what is a driveway and what is a private road is different. So under E nine-one-one rules, uh, one or two is a driveway, three or more is a private road, a private street. And that would mean that we would have a difference, and our, our zoning would say it's a driveway up until three, and a private road four or more. Um, and because we can't change the state rules, uh, it makes sense that we would just adjust our zoning such that instead of saying serves not more than three parcels, we would change it to say not more than two parcels. And if we make this change, it would just be included in the rest of all the other changes, so. I will stop sharing and open that up to uh any questions that you guys have. I can go into whatever detail you want on this one.
Uh, Connor, go ahead.
Mike, do you mind just going over that, that character of a neighborhood state statute um change there again? I just wanna get my head around that a bit.
Okay, so under the state rules that change, um, a municipality can no longer deny a residential project of one to four units. So one, two, three, or four-unit buildings, you cannot deny it based on character of the area. So that's what the state law has said, which um only appears in the conditional use requirements. And so conditional use has three requirements: traffic, character of the area, and uh impact on community facilities. So because, um, you know, one to four-unit building is, is so small, it's never gonna have an impact on traffic, it's never gonna have an impact on community facilities, not gonna impact our schools or our fire or our police. So it really, now that we can't do character of the area, it really could never be denied for anything there. So we just shifted that category, um, and there weren't too many. Most of our residential uses were already permitted. But in a few districts, we had to shift them to, from conditional to permitted, which I think is probably a good thing.
Got it. Thanks, Mike.
Uh, Dan, go ahead.
Yeah, just to maybe put a, a, a capstone on that, uh, when you're saying that, Mike, it's, um, it now one to four units is either permitted or it's not permitted in a particular zoning district.
Correct.
Right, so there's no conditional use, the, that third category.
Correct.
Okay. Um, the other point I just wanted to make to the board, I, I'm going to recuse myself from voting on any of the Saban's pasture sections of the zoning, uh, because I've done some uh, work in my uh private practice in regards to those and did provide some testimony at the planning commission, um, you know. So when, I just wanted to simply put that out upfront. Um, I did not comment or do anything on the other sections of the zoning code, and so I feel I'm still able to vote on those, but um, will recuse myself from the Saban's improve uh changes.
So we'll plan on splitting that up then when we vote on it, okay?
I'd ask that you do that when it, when the time's appropriate.
Um, actually, also on a procedural note, um, so, Mike, that last bit that you mentioned about uh the, the driveways, um, the definition of driveways, uh, uh, so I guess, can you just clarify again the, the process there? Because that was not a change that was approved or recommended by the planning commission. That needs to be added separately?
Uh, it would, it, it could be added into the, the slate. I mean, we've got enough attorneys who can chime in if I, uh, if I'm not perfectly correct. But the way the council hearings on these go is that the council can make whatever changes they like, and if they are substantial changes, uh, you know, or, or will have a substantial impact on, on policy, then it goes back to the planning commission for them to make a determination. Um, my professional opinion as a planner is shifting the definition of driveway from three to two probably is not a substantial change and would probably not warrant um sending it back to the planning commission for public comment and input. But that would be um your call to make on that one.
Okay. Um, I do have a couple other questions, but I wanna give others the opportunity, if you all have um questions. Uh, Lauren and then Dan.
Uh, yeah, just, um, I was glad to see the addition of the vegetation removal. Um, that was, seems like a great way to make sure that we're picking up those um important changes in buffers and wetlands. Um, for the traffic changes that are being proposed, I was just curious, does that provision, have you seen that historically ever trigger like redesign or anything that has been beneficial? Like, are we, by excluding that, or, you know, are you missing anything that historically has resulted in better projects for the community or, you know, avoiding impacts to traffic like through creative redesign or anything?
We will still have the flexibility, um, as this is written, um, because the requirement is still, I'm just flipping to it really quick. Um, so the overall standard is still that the applicant shall demonstrate that the proposed development will not have an undue adverse effect upon traffic in the area. Um, and the board still has the right to um minimize and mitigate the amount of traffic. So um, we still would have the ability to say require a turning lane if it was a, you know, um, that's a common one, you'll see in Act two fifty. Somebody's putting in Home Depot and they've gotta put in a turning lane in the state highway. Um, those requirements, we could still do, uh, we could still require mitigation, we could still require turning lanes. So I think the flexibility and, um, you know, we're still gonna get the public comment or the, 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 uh, the comment from DPW and the engineers as to the impact. Uh, we could require the project to be smaller if we felt that, you know, um, say, a project was gonna have a hundred housing units, but according to the traffic analysis, you know, fifty units would, would not have an undue effect. We could require the project to be smaller. But um, what the change we made was really to specifically try to remove those requirements that were getting into level of service. Because what ends up happening inevitably with the level of service is somebody has to be the last one. Um, so somebody could come in and, uh, in a class A intersection that's operating really well. They could do a lot of, uh, add a lot of traffic, make it just at the end of class C. And then somebody else has a really small project that will trip it from class C to class D, and that one will be denied. Um, and so really, you don't get the opportunity to look at, um, because, because it's tied to level of service, you can't require the first one to do more because it didn't break the rule. Um, but you have to hit the last one who's making a small change. So it gives you a little bit more flexibility at the DRB level, um, and also gives you the ability to um weigh in, in some cases, what is a pre-existing condition. Um, we know the Berry Street intersection is a problem, and we know it has a proposed solution. Um, and that proposed solution is gonna make enough changes. But the question is, um, what impact would a project in Saban's area, just using that as the example, um, have on that intersection? Um, and how do you weigh that? If it's, if, if the new improved intersection will be going from a, a, you know, from an F to an E, and we're gonna use some TIF funds to do F to an E, it's still worse than a C. Um, you know, we had all these things that just kept tripping ourselves because we couldn't get around this level of service requirement, um, that kept coming in. So uh, that, that's really where the planning commission came down on, on the issue is that we, we, we have the flexibility, but we don't need the level of service, and level of service causes problems.
Okay, Dan, go ahead.
Sure, um, turning to the um, the housing, Mike, I had a question about the residential uh, and congregate living sort of categories. Um, the, to what extent are these going to, or do they intend to, or do you think will functionally uh affect, say, people's use of their properties as Airbnbs? Where they may rent out a room and share facilities, um, such as kitchens or bathrooms?
So the more of the Airbnb as a shared, in the shared living arrangements?
Right, I mean, i- I, I think of Airbnbs in, in sort of two ways. I mean, the Airbnbs can be short-term rentals where you have an apartment. Instead of renting it for a year, you rent it for days, um, but it's essentially functions as an apartment. But there's also a number of Airbnbs where people say, I have a spare bedroom, I'm gonna rent it out. You share the kitchen and the bathroom with me.
Yeah, I think there's a court decision that's kinda more in your area about how they, how the state had been seeing those, um, the Airbnbs kind of as single-family, as a, a use of a single-family home. And whether it's Airbnb'd or not, it's still considered a single-family home. Yeah, I can see how there can be some gray in there. We would probably, um, we had some additional clarification in three one one one, which, if I can find it really quick, um, which is, it's actually, it's on its own, own page on number two, that unless expressly stated otherwise, uh, in, in a specific provision of these regulations, occupancy type is not considered, is not a consideration in the approval of any dwelling unit or congregate living facility. So whether the facility is owner-occupied, rental-occupied, condominium, leased, timeshare, or other occupancy or ownership type. So um, our intention is to stay out of the regulation of occupancies because it, um, that we can, but it just, it's just a much more complicated. It would become a change of use if you had a single-family home timeshare as opposed to a single-family home for a single-family home. And I think I would probably be thinking of the Airbnb along that same line as it's, it's just more of an occupancy, um, than it is actually a congregate living arrangement, but. I could look at clarif- seeing if that needs clarification. I could talk about it with Meredith and see if we think that needs clarification.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that was just my concern, is that it, it might have that unintentional effect unless the trigger is fairly clear to either exclude because of the, I mean, because there's an argument, isn't there, that there's a, that's effectively a change of use? If you have a single-family home and you start advertising it as an Airbnb, um, you know, where it's effectively a congregate living, then it mightn't. Uh, and I'm thinking along the lines of either, you know, uh, a neighbor that has an issue because all of a sudden their quiet neighborhood street has three cars parked in front of it, or there's a loud party one night, or, you know, the normal issues that drive these kind of things.
Um, yeah. Yeah, the more I think about it, I might actually, it, it'll be interesting, we'll have to chew it over, but I could actually see it as a congregate living as well, because we are, the, the dividing line that we had been talking about for congregate living was whether or not you shared facilities. So um, roomy, you know, are you renting a room and sharing the kitchen and bathroom facilities? You know, um, you have your own key to your own bedroom, you're, you are clearly, you know, you, you have no say in who's living in the next room over from you, um, because you're just renting by the room. Uh, that's gonna be congregate living. Um, so I think there may be some subtleties in there, um, you know, uh, if they're renting a room, are they, you know, uh, you know, strictly, you know, you know, having exclusive rights, I guess is how I would think of it, you know, to that room. Um, and, and I think, so I think there, there's an argument that could go either way, and maybe it needs some clarification, and I'll talk to Meredith about it.
Thanks.
Okay, um, other comments or questions? I do wanna also open out, open it up to the public if there are other um, public comments or questions, um, as it was advertised as a public hearing, um, in the paper. Uh, Jack, go ahead.
Just a very quick comment, which is that, uh, I really appreciate these presentations we get from you, Mike, whenever we have this massive uh block of text that you're proposing to change, and we have all this stuff we need to work through. Your presentations always make it much more comprehensible, and it's a real help.
And I can go through next time more line by line if people think that's easier, using the strikeout copy. And I can go through next time more line by line if people think that's easier, using the strikeout copy. Because I can understand it can be tough, break them into three blocks and they're stirred throughout.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess I just want to thank Mike too, he's really very helpful, thank you.
I agree, all right, and so I don't think we need to, do we need to? We don't need to vote to put it on the agenda for the, as a public hearing for the twenty fourth, do we? All right, well, thank you, Mike, and we'll see you back next time.
Did we, did we want a motion or what's the board's feeling on the? Addition of the driveway, did we want to just add that in, did we want a motion to add the driveway change?
Jack, go ahead.
I'll move to add the driveway change to the to the package so that there's no question. As to the propriety of taking it up next time.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hey, all in favor, please say aye. And oppose. Okay, all right, so.
And so we're clear, we'll have a formal public hearing on this at the next meeting.
It sounds good, thank you. You too. All right, so we're up to the utility budgets. So for this, I assume I'm transferring it over to Kelly. Go right, go ahead.
Thank you, so I've got Kurt and Donna here to to field some questions around projects. But Kurt will take on that piece, and so I'm gonna share my screen here and just go over the numbers with you and summary. And then we can get into the details if needed. So without further ado. Let's share. Okay, can you see my screen, okay? Yes, perfect. So just in summary, we're gonna be reviewing the water sewer and district heat budgets. And so starting off with water. It's it's down a little bit year over year, about one point seven percent or, you know, fifty two thousand dollars or so. And so this is due in large part to changes in the water benefit charge. The other thing I want to know is that this assumes a rate adjustment of two and a half percent. And reviewing these budgets, we also took a closer look at the actuals to see what, you know, was really happening and then grew the budgets. Accordingly from there, so if you're looking at the budget line items, you may not see two and a half percent on the line for the rates per se. Because it's based on actuals and not necessarily. Fiscally year twenty one to twenty two, and then there was a little bit of an adjustment in terms of. The master plan had called for three and a half percent. And this is tied to the one percent infrastructure investment and the Bureau of Labor Statistics inflation. And a little bit, so Bureau of Labor Statistics inflation is at about one point four percent right now and this factors in one point five. And so just wanted to note those things for you. And then you'll notice that if you're looking at the line items, and I got ahead of myself just a little bit, I did send some revised lines this afternoon. So this is what this is based off of. So just going back to where I was, the positive adjustments, we have seen some positive adjustments in electric and propane. Electric about ten thousand dollars or so within the water budget and about seven thousand dollars for propane. We also did see some positive movement in terms of debt service, we, you know, made our payments and had more favorable interest rates. So that's working in our favor, and then going on to, you know, the heart of, you know, what we're doing. To continue steady state, our capital improvements, so we've got Coming Street coming up. And that's thirty thousand dollars that will be in-house, that's materials only, so just want to stress that. And then in addition to that, we've got a Route Two railroad crossing line and the Main Street water line for about two hundred thousand dollars. And there are, you know, other items that might factor in depending on how much those projects end up coming in and up. And then from there, the finished water pump rebuild is about eighty thousand dollars. So that's at a high level, what's going on within the water fund. And I'll keep going and then take questions at the end unless if you have specific ones related to water right now. Okay, I'll keep going, thanks. So the sewer fund, you'll see that we're up quite a bit. But that is mostly due to the Water Resource Recovery Facility. Revenues that we're getting based off of our operational and performance contract with our upgrade. And so I've noted what is related directly to revenue, so we'll see an increase in revenue. Based on the high strength, solid stuff waste that will be able to take in two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars or so. The total package for the revenue and energy operational savings. Is just over, just about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so those items are adjusted within the. Lines for the expenditures, so you'll see those savings coming off on the expenditure lines. And then we did adjust rates again by the same two and a half percent. You will notice that with the sewer rates in particular, it's a two and a half percent adjustment, but it's grown off of the actuals. Because we were not actually seeing the increase year over year if we would have gone off of the twenty one numbers. We're just at a odd point, and so I want to take a moment to stress that. Much like with the general fund budgets and the other details that we've been discussing, this 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 development really. Is kind of a hold the line approach, there probably will need to be future investments in our infrastructure, but this. Should work for now, it's not gonna be this way. We're hoping things will get better, I guess is what I'm trying to get at. And so just moving on, we see positive adjustments like you mentioned above in terms of some of the operational savings that we'll see. Coming through electric, propane, water, solids, those things are gonna be to the good for us. In the expense lines and the form of cost savings. And then I also want to note debt service, we've got. Payments that have been made and favorable interest rates, however, the resource recovery facility payment for debt service is. Coming due in this, in fiscal year twenty two for the both semi annual payments. But then it actually starts in March of twenty one. And I also want to note that there is fifteen thousand dollars in the lines for the plant for an upgrade to the bathrooms. And then in terms of capital improvements, this includes funding for State Street. So there's a sewer line down by the Capitol complex for about three hundred thousand dollars. That is near where the Black Lives Matter sign is, so we'll just need to account for that as we do the work, it needs to be done. But we also don't want to disrupt the sign either, so I just wanted to mention that. And then the next slide gets into the upgrades at the plant. And then we're also funding a screw screw pump rebuild. I've learned a lot in this process about, you know, what's in these budgets and Kurt can kind of share the details if needed. So moving on to the. Treatment facility upgrade, just in summary, you know, what we've done to date, the total project is about sixteen point seven five million. And we did end up securing our bond. Financing, so that's what we're actually gonna start to see our repayment on, and we are also seeing our grants come in. We have nearly all of the pollution control money and we're now at the point where we can get in the USDA grant money. So that's really positive. So phase one is nearly complete and you can kind of see in summary, you know, what we're looking at for payments there. And then phase two is set to begin in April, and so initially, this was billed to be about five million dollars. We're still under discussion with the contractor about, you know. What that will will cost as they're really specking things out, so there's potential for it to be a little bit more. And we wanted to just kind of highlight that here as we're going through these budgets, because it'll have an impact in the future on budgets. Or depending on whether or not we get additional grant funding. And then moving on to district heat, so. What I do want to note is this is level fund year over year. We ended FY twenty, change year over year to the bad of about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars or so. It's better than FY nineteen, it's just not, you know, to the positive yet. In FY nineteen, we were to the bad year over year, two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So it's at least trending in the right direction, this is our sixth full season, there are twenty one downtown buildings who receive heat. We are working on operationalizing the amendment that we just passed to turn the heat off in the summer months. And, you know, this is really an investment in the environment, and we've got some work to do with the district heat to just. Bring it to be sustainable or, you know, have this conversation. But some of the highlights within the operational lines that we are seeing a reduction in fuel oil. And we are investing in valve replacements and infrastructure upgrades to keep the system running efficiently. And so here, this slide just gives you sort of a breakdown summary of where the rates are if we were to. Move them forward based on what's in this draft budget. And then you'll note for district heat that the proposed FY twenty two rates are to be determined. We want to take a closer look at what we're getting in terms of billings from the state, just to make sure that. You know, we are giving sort of an accurate recommendation. And so that's why that's noted that way there, and you'll you'll also see that we have not had an increase in rates. For the last three years, so it's just something to consider as we carry on with these budgets. And then lastly, per the master plan, we've got the replacement status. We're gonna be looking at this a little bit closer with Public Works. To sort of recast the master plan to see where we're at today and to see where we're going moving forward to make sure that we can. Meet the plans so that we are sustainable based on what we're seeing currently. And so this is kind of a a budget that holds the line. It within the utilities for now until things improve or there's a little bit more certainty. And so next steps, and then, you know, take questions and I can stop the share or go back to any slides if you like. It's just to get guidance from you on, you know, any changes you'd like to see or if there's an additional analysis that you'd like us to do and we could bring that back for the meeting on the twenty fourth. We'll work towards rate setting and locking in rates within the system as we begin the fiscal year. And then we're gonna begin working on the master plan update. Based on some of the things that are presented here in FY twenty two and going forward. And so that is our presentation. And we'll take questions.
Okay, any questions? Dan, go ahead.
Couple of questions, let me start off with the the first one, you mentioned. Work on State Street by the Black Lives Matter sign, I presume that's the the painted. On the street, is it, is the work such that it would? Disrupt that sign, so for example, I'm anticipating, given the fact that it's faded, then we may receive an application to either repaint it or renew it. Would this work interfere with that where it's presently located?
Yeah, if I can answer that. It it is, it is about half of the mural would need to be, and its current location would be excavated as part of the sewer project. The sewer line actu- actually runs underneath an abandoned storm or steam pipe that the that the state no longer utilizes. So it's it's one of our most important projects for CSO reduction. Because it's, we can't clean it right now and there's, it's a lot of sharp bends in the sewer, in the main line sewer pipe, so. It's definitely going to disrupt it, we're tar- we're looking at sometime, you know, between July and August for the work. Just to give you a timeframe of when that would take place, but yeah, it's it's about half of the mural would be excavated.
Okay, so just if we do receive one of those applications, we'll obviously have to take in the timing of this into account. You know, because it it's not something, we can't move the location of this, the sewer pipe. And this sounds like an important piece of infrastructure that has to be done. So my next question was. And this is probably one you you've answered before to previous councils and I apologize, but. The sewer around the corner of State and Main where La Brio used to be located. Is it, is that scheduled, is there, you know, because that seems to be a point at which we, there's a lot of. Affluent in the summer particularly, but at all seasons I've walked past it and and smelled it, is that? On the agenda to be repaired, because that seems like a fairly high profile, high traffic area. And it can be quite noxious and I noticed over the past year, it really seemed to be.
Yeah, so East State Street is in our queue, two thousand twenty three is anticipated construction date. The reason the their odors there, right at the bottom, the storm system ties right into the sewer main. And so you do get some venting of odors, you know, through the storm structure. That also is another big CSO contributor. So all of East State Street is essentially separated except for the bottom. Two catch basins, but then it all goes right back into the sewer, so the entire street is. That storm water is contributing to, you know, our over, our sewer overflow issue. So yeah, it is in the queue, we're gonna start design work this summer, you know, survey and investigation, smoke testing, things like that. But we're anticipating funds will be available in two thousand twenty three.
Okay, and and there really wouldn't be a way to bump that up the chain, because it sounds like you're you're just starting to factor in design. Issues and really solving the problem.
Right, I. Yeah, it is, it is a tricky location, it's a very busy intersection with a lot of utilities, so it is gonna take some time to design and and plan out.
Okay, but at least it's in the queue, all right, that, thanks, I appreciate that and I, I presume I'm not the first person to ask about that.
Go ahead.
I wanted to ask, is this not also tied into the bridge, I know I've seen it in the regional planning tack. That this one comes up with the bridge, and the bridge is in the queue, but it's slowly moving.
Yeah, so we did a preliminary engineering study that evaluated the existing stormwater outfalls in the area. And their determination was that there was not enough capacity in the existing outfalls to take all the storm. From East State Street, so we we had planned to install a new outfall as part of the bridge, the Rialto Bridge reconstruction. I think because that project is lagging so much, we're going to look at alternative methods. For separating some of the storm. So we're gonna investigate potentially bringing some down haze in place. And see if we can maybe redo the parking lot with some infiltration. To divert a portion of the storm water so that we can, we don't have to have that new outfall.
Right, because the bridge is like two thousand twenty five or something, isn't it?
I I haven't seen it on the actual, a date associated, but maybe you know more about that than I do.
It was creeping up, so this date to me was like more ahead than it was, so that's good. Yeah, there's a lot of demand for the regional money, just a lot of demand, not enough. Thank you.
Jack, go ahead.
Thanks, Kurt, if I, am I right that that area of sewer line on State Street? When we were hearing a presentation last year about, I think last year about CSO, there were also issues with the. With the level going up and down in there, which makes it hard to. To clear that.
A couple of years ago, we did have a a blockage or a collapse in the pipe itself. And it ended up being, you know, sort of an all night project to repair that. So there's there's definitely issues with the sewer line, also we have a lot of water leaks on East. So there, there's definitely, uh, issues with the sewer line, uh, also we have a lot of water leaks on East State Street, um. Even in the part that was replaced in the nineties at the bottom, uh, we're getting a lot of corrosion in the ductile iron pipe. So, uh, the, the street really needs a full utility replacement, um, as well as, you know, uh, stabilization for the roadway. I'm sure you've all noticed the, the heaves and the bumps on the road, um. So it's gonna be very similar to the Norfield Street project as essentially a, a complete reconstruction, so it's a, it's a big undertaking, um. You know, that's why we sort of have to wait till the funding, uh, is available, not in just the utility funds, but also in the capital improvements plan.
Thanks, also I see we're, we're seeing some. Increased revenues being generated by the, uh, Water Resource Recovery Facility upgrade, and that's good to see.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, go ahead, Donna.
I had just a question about the district heat, I read in the paper that we have some unhappy customers, is that true? They feel their, their heat has gone up and they have been disappointed, do we need more members to spread the cost?
Complicated issue, um, the, uh, so, you know. The price of oil has dropped, so the price of district heat in relation to that is not favorable right now and that. Was not the case when this went on and not what the projections were. So I don't think we have unhappy customers, uh, in fact, I know we don't have unhappy customers with regard to the service that they're receiving. Heat they're getting and that kind of thing, but I think there are those. That wish this costs less, I mean, you know, we all made a calculated risk and, you know, I can't say that I, I blame them, um. The, you know, certainly more customers would be a good thing. But the challenge, so a couple of challenges with that, one is right, you know, we're limited to the loop that we have. Because the cat, unless we could, unless we have enough customers that for which a capital cost. Um, was worth it for the amount of revenue they'd bring in, we've, we've looked at a couple of. Places, you know, extending the line and the finances just, you know, don't work for it. So it would have to be something that, that makes sense and works. Second thing is, I think even people that might be interested right now at the price of oil, it's not necessarily the optimal time. To do that, we have at least one interested customer who would like to do it just because they think it's the right thing to do. Um, and we're working with them, but I don't know, you know, when they're gonna have. And then the third dis- disincentive for a customer. Is they also have to pay to convert their building, you know, they have, sometimes they have to do the, the initial hookup. So we're looking, uh, I think Senator Putt Pritchard with his day job at the Clean Energy Development Fund had indicated they might have some money to help. Help people with that, um, you know, reduce the cost of the connection. So we're gonna put that together, but it's, it's tricky right now, you know, it's just, uh, you know, it's the, 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 the biggest and most likely buildings to go on. Went on when we rebuilt, so now we've got smaller, smaller buildings, but we, we try to push it whenever we can.
Well, I appreciate the information, I think it's important to sort of counter some of the things that have been printed, so thank you.
Um, I also just wanna clarify something that comes up in conversation every now and then, which is, uh, about our water main breaks. Um, so just to clarify, when, when we have water main breaks. Uh, the funds that go to repair that, th- does that come from, uh, the water fund? Or does that come from, uh, our capital improvement prod, um, you know, money?
Yeah, it does come from the water fund, we have a line item in the water fund for street repairs, which is. You know, real, directly related to leaks.
Mm-hmm, and that also separately, and I, again, like, pretty sure I know the answer to this, but I just wanna make sure that it's clear, um. That, uh, funding to replace the lines also comes from the water fund and not from, uh, the capital improvement.
Yes.
Money, okay, and.
And just to put a fine point on that, there's, you know, we also have capital improvements in the water and sewer funds that are funded with those funds, but it's not the, the general fund. CIP that we talk about.
Yes, yes, the general.
And I also wanted to follow up on Kelly's because the, the plan that the council adopted, the, the long-term plan, you may recall, called for the rates to be just. One percent over CPI to help catch up, not only at that point, but we're, not only we're both funds in deficit, but to try to. Provide funding for these types of repairs and this past year, the CPI was one point four, so that's the, the basis for the two point five percent. Rate adjustment, so that is consistent, we are seeking rates that are consistent with the plan that the council adopted.
Well, so this, uh, I mean, this seems like a, a good plan to me, my only, um, question beyond that, I suppose is, uh. Is that enough, like, are we catching up to what this effectively steady state should be fast enough? And I, I know that that's balanced with, uh, you know, what the, what people can absorb right now and, um. Which altogether tells me that, uh, probably. As proposed, it's fine, but, uh, I just wanna acknowledge that, that we still have ways to go.
Yeah, I mean, so the last slide that Kelly had was on the replacement status, you know, uh, up to, um, last year. We were very close to our targets, uh, from the steady state plan, um, and really, if you read the master plan, it was. It was meant to really ramp up in fiscal year thirty-eight, so it was kind of a slow start and then. Ramping up a lot of funding later on, um, but we just took a straight proportionate split as our targets, you know, over the fifty years. And we're, you know, we're just about meeting those, so I think we're in pretty good shape as far as meeting the intent of the plan right now.
Now, I know the, um, in the documents that we received, the recommended action is just review. Uh, but I actually wonder if we don't need to have, uh, a vote to approve, um. This, the budget does, as, or, and the rates as presented.
Certainly could approve the budgets, that would be great, um, I don't know if we need to set the rates yet, or you, we usually set the rates a little later on. Um, but I'll defer to Kelly on that.
Yeah, that, that's right, yeah, I mean, if you wanted to approve the budgets, that would be good, the one thing that I do wanna know, um, just sort of a caveat, um. Is with the district heat rates, we want to, um, just take a look at them, um, and see. You know, what the recommendation might be at rate setting, and so the budget is level fund, um, we just wanna make sure that we're. Um, doing right by rate pairs, um, and so we will get into that a little bit more. Much like we'll get into the master plan a little bit more and likely bring those items back to you along with setting the rates, um, before the fiscal year starts.
Connor and then Dan, and then Lauren.
I, I was gonna make a motion, but, uh, but I, I guess I'll move to approve the budgets and discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, um, alright, so motion and second, uh, Dan and then Lauren.
Sure, I, I, I guess I had a question on the, on the rates, uh, Kelly, you, you were seeming to indicate that the rates had not changed for. Several years, um. You know, in part, the, the question that I have is, well, I mean, obviously that's great for rate pairs, um. But is this something where we are, uh, you know, that, that steady rate has, is essentially a decline? Um, and that there is going to be a need for additional revenue, um, to fund these projects and, and plans.
Yeah, so we wanna take a closer look at that and just make sure, um, that we're in good shape when it comes to district heat, um, uh, but, you know. We've been working together over the past, um, couple of weeks, finance and public works to really get our heads around where. The other utilities, water and sewer are, and those seem to be, uh, pretty good in terms of where we need to be, um, I will say that, you know. As I've said before, the, this is kind of a stay, um, to hold the line until things improve, um. So, hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously when you're talking about these kind of annual rates, you know, and, and a particular service like this where the money goes directly to the. Infrastructure and services provided by the, to the rate payers, um, you know, there's always that concern of making sure that the rates. Um, y- y- you're not, you're not creating a, a, a need for a sudden jump in the rates, um. That it's easier to raise a little bit at a time as opposed to, um, you know, stressing everybody's pocketbook by doing that big jump. And I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense if that's, if that's the situation here, or if, um. Y- you know, just as far as the rates are concerned, understanding we're not voting on them tonight, um, but that would be something I'd want, want more information about.
So to ju- to jump in here, um, we, you know, we do, we have adopted that sort of steady, uh, slight. Uh, incremental approach with water and sewer, and I think that's been successful in terms of, you know, I, way before, I think, um. Almost everyone's time on this council, except maybe, you know, Donna, um, those two funds have pretty significant deficits and now they've, you know, they've turned that around. And also, you know, allowing us to do some of this infrastructure, with district heat, um, there's a couple of factors, one. Uh, we're dependent on a rate that we get from the state and we don't, we haven't got that yet for next year. So they give us what they estimate the rate that they're gonna need to, to produce, and the second thing, as I mentioned, it's already sort of higher. Than oil, so, you know, and what, so we're, we're in a hard spot there, um. You know, we really appreciate the customers that came on and took the chance with us over the long haul. And, um, and they are, you know, paying a premium for that right now, and so to push that up. Is, you know, I think it has to be pretty thoughtful to do that, on the other hand, we need money for the system, so. There's, there's a balance there.
No, I under- I understand, this is, this is analogous to the situation the state was in back in the eighties with hydro. When they were trying to, you know, they made contracts with Hydro Quebec anticipating that the cost of energy generation was gonna go sharply up. And then it didn't, um, and so we were stuck with expensive hydro contracts, which. Stopped beating the market when the market went down, but, um, so, uh, uh, understood, um, I appreciate it, thanks.
Lauren.
Uh, yeah, just two things, um, one, just wanted to note again, I just. Continue to be concerned that we're not addressing the, the leachate, I know it's built into the line item, it's, we're, you know, bringing. Contamination into our community, so just flagging that in the court and getting back to that conversation, um, but it is a significant part of. Um, kind of the numbers here, um, so, but the other piece just wanted to note. Um, so the, the lobbying committee had met and, um, just so people know, there is a lot of thinking going on of. How is the city of Montpelier positioning ourselves as well as possible to be ready? You know, if, when federal stimulus dollars that could help, um, you know, if any of these opportunities could be, um, funded, you know. District heat, the idea of the Clean Energy Development Fund, you know, there's new money, um, both that the state is putting in for one-time money. Uh, be, you know, due to some of the stimulus funds they've gotten, and then, you know, I know there's a big infrastructure bill under discussion, who knows what will happen and what we might be eligible for. But just, um, you know, certainly, I think there's, there's motivation and, um, I think, you know, us keeping an eye on it too of like, are we. In the queue and ready to go for whatever we need, so, um, but I know that the staff's been doing, thinking about that, and so I think. We're in a good place and just, you know, hopeful that, that some opportunities might come up that could, um, help, you know, support some of these projects.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so there is a, um, motion and a second, uh, about approving the budgets, um. As presented, uh, so any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And oppose. Okay, so, uh, those pass and, and we'll, uh, see you back, uh, with. Uh, information about rates at some later time. Okay, uh, super, thank you, thanks for all, all of your work on this, um, uh, ongoing, I know. Alright, um. Okay, so we are up to an item about, um, amending the, the committee and board policies. Um, which mostly has to do with, uh, social media and Google, Google Docs and, um, so I will. Turn this over to, uh, C staff.
Hi, so thank you for letting me talk to you tonight, so it had come to our attention that some committees and boards, um, may be using. Uh, uh, platforms such as Google Docs to share documents and edit them, um, in, as a group. Um, while they're not in meetings, so we wanted to clarify that those, um, technologies cannot be used. Uh, to group edit documents, we're not saying that they cannot be used as a repository for documents, they can be used to save. And therefore share documents with each other, but the editing out of a meeting of those documents is considered a violation of the public meeting law, so. Um, we just wanted to make that very clear in our policies since it wasn't addressed. And we do also want to acknowledge that a lot of folks use things like Google Docs to save documents so that it can be accessible at all. And that is okay, but using those Google documents as like a, an editing platform where folks can go and give feedback to documents is not okay. And any edits that happen, um, to documents need to happen in a public meeting, so. Um, there's a lot of ways that I know committees do this work, um, in a awful manner where a chair may. Or a member may distribute a document, everyone does their own edits, and then it gets combined and voted in a public meeting, that's okay too. Um, we just wanted to make sure that our policies and y'all's policies for our committees and boards were, um, as up to date as possible. So most of the wording comes from VLCT and their legal team.
Okay, so I have, I have a lot of thoughts on this, um, uh, I think this makes sense, um. To do, but I, I would wanna tweak some of the language in the policy, um, to, to reflect what you just said. Um, because I think what, what you said makes sense, uh, but I think it could be misconstrued as it is in the, um. In the document that we were given, so I'm, I'm looking at, um, gosh, what is this document called, this is the. Um, packet edits, I guess, and so there's, um, the red section is what's been added or changed, is that right? Okay, so, um, under item nine, um, the second sentence says, no city committee or board. Should use any online document repository such as Google Docs, uh, for the purposes of sharing and editing documents, um. I, I don't know how you would feel about this, but I would, um, maybe change that, so I, I think there's. Two, two issues there, one is the definition of the word sharing, uh, because that could. Be as innocuous as like, have this, have access to this document, no editing necessary. Um, so I think that could, because I, I think we do wanna allow people to use it as repository if it is just a repository. Um, to sh- to share in the sense that, um. In the sense that like multiple people have access to it, um, not necessarily editing, um, and then the, the second issue. I think is, is the part about, um, editing documents, uh, I, I appreciated that, uh, it's. The, the, the issue is that the editing cannot happen outside of committee time, um. And so I think we, we should just add that, um, somewhere in there, because theoretically, um, if you, if we were. I'm kind of like, almost as we're doing now, right, like, if we are all. In a public meeting that's been warned and we are looking at a document and editing is happening to that document, we're all collectively a part of that conversation. Um, and so you could edit documents in Google Doc as long as it's in the context of a warned public meeting. Um, so. Does that, uh, I, I, I ho- I ho- I think that's still within the intent of. What you are saying, um. Just wanted to make sure that was clear, how, how do you feel about that?
That works for me, I'm trying to craft some language around that, um, sort of to reflect said, y'all can see the changes I'm making, correct? As I'm making the.
Yeah, yeah.
Dan?
Yes, go ahead, Donna.
A question is, if you're doing that, one, does the language have to say it's on screen, but then what happens to people on the phone?
That's a good question, I mean.
I would argue that, that if you're discussing a document at a public meeting. Um, and it was, you know, it's available in, in a public place, like, you know, with the agenda or something. People don't necessarily have to see the editing, I mean, think about the number of times we've. People don't necessarily have to see the editing. I mean, think about the number of times we've had paper in front of us at a council meeting and someone's reading and saying, I want to change this and we do, I mean, that, that's the old school way of doing that. I think the issue is that, the, the, the issue is that it is, if this editing is being done collaboratively outside of the one public meeting. So that, you know, the council has a discussion about a document, it gets sent out, and then you all make your edits in the two weeks in between. That's a deliberation of sorts that isn't happening in the public eye. But if, if the, if the, you know, if the, the committee has a meeting and it's going to be to discuss the plan for X, and they're there editing the plan for X in a public meeting, I think they're good because people can hear the discussion and they can, they can see whatever. I mean, you, you're not going to have a perfect scenario. I mean, how many times have we had, you know, paper documents and people sitting in the audience saying, what do you, you know, what are you talking about? We can't see these. We can't read them. But at least they can hear the conversation. So, well, you know, you try the best that you can.
Yeah. So there's, there's a, a third thing that I want to bring up that's not exactly, related to this language, um, adjacent to it, I suppose, which is that, uh, I do think that it would, I, like, I have visions of having a city drive, whether it's Google or some other drive, that where you could like look in the drive and have each committee have their own folder. You can go into that, that folder for that committee and then look at the, the minutes for that committee or any documents that, that they are sharing and they're, you know, maybe they're just PDF forms, so they're not editable. Um, you know, it's, it's just for our own ease of searching.
Uh, we are, I'm, I'm sorry, man.
No, go ahead. I, I just, well, I, I guess I'll just add that, uh, I, I know, um, I have to keep my own, I, and I'm sure you all do too, right? Like we have to keep our own, uh, both like personal computer and cloud drives organized so that we can find things. And I, I think that kind of organization system might make sense for the city.
Um, uh, we totally agree with you. I will just say that. Um, we, we know we're behind the curve on our website and it is something we are working on. Our new contract and our new partnership with VC three is really going to bring us to sort of, I think, where you want us to be. When we migrate all of our work and our, everything that we do to the Microsoft three sixty-five platform, it does come with, um, SharePoint, which can be a publicly, like it can be a website, like a web-based document repository. So we will have that functionality. It just doesn't exist right now. Um, we're the same thing, um, I think that most folks are is, is saving things on our work drives. Um, and I, and I do, I, I, I want to acknowledge that the folks that are, um, using things like Google Docs to save, um, committee work are volunteers who are doing their best and they're doing, um, the work for the city on their own time. And we're not trying to take away any functionality from them, just making sure that we're all, following the open meeting law.
Yeah. Um, so I've, I've one more suggestion and then I, I know other people, uh, have their hands raised. Um, just up in this second sentence, um, where it says, um, no city committee or board should use any online, uh, document programs such as Google Docs for the purposes of, and I would, I would add, um, collaborative editing outside of warned meetings. Does that, I, I think that's still, s- still getting at the, the point. Okay. All right, Donna, I know you had your hand up and I apologize if others.
No, 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 it was a question about what you were talking about, about the depository, Google Drive. But then how does the public have access to that? We now have a committee who puts everything there and they don't put it on the city website. Because they find the city website difficult. But how do they?
So, I'm sorry.
Do, do they, do we have a big link then on the website that says for all committee, you go to this and then everybody can have access? Cause you need.
That would be the end goal. But right now we don't have that. And so most folks will ask for, um, documents the same way they ask us for documents. Was it just a sort of a request for those documents? So, hi, you talked about this in a meeting. Can you send that to me? That sort of thing. Um, because if you think about it right now, since there's so many chairs and a lot of those are the holders of a lot of information for these committees, that, that Google Drive might be theirs, right? It might be their private drive. So, right now, what we're, the situation we're in now is not ideal. I just want to very clearly state that. It is not ideal. Um, I think one, now that we have VC three as a partner, we will get to that ideal space where yes, I can say, I will have a link for each committee and they can save documents there and it will be on our website. It's just not current state. People have to ask for documents if they can't find them.
Oh, okay. Uh, Cameron, but one of the suggestions that came from Kate, you know, I think you all got her big email. But her and I went back and forth and one of her suggestions, and she can't make it tonight or she'd be here, part of this discussion. She really loves Google Drive. But one of her things was if, if they posted their Google Drive connection in their minutes and their minutes got to the city website, would that be enough to be able to, to use it?
No, the, so first off.
Depository.
That's fine. We're not saying they cannot save documents on Google Docs. That is not what we're saying. We're saying they cannot out of a meeting, edit things on Google. Yeah. So that would be fine. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I can't, uh, actually see everybody.
Anne is raising his hand.
Um, yeah, go ahead.
So, and, and part of this, I think we're, we're feeling around this, this problem. I, I mean, just to be clear and identify it, it's, it's really, the problem is uh, public board members sitting around outside of a meeting, using Google Docs to, to edit at the same time.
Yes.
Collaboratively. And so, you, you know, in some respects, isn't there, um, I mean, Google Docs has the function where you can have, um, like timestamps on, on changes. So if somebody does.
That to me seems very granular and we can't, i- it's not just Google Docs. It's all of the things. And the, you know, the LCTs very much says, just don't do it. Just don't.
Right.
It's not a majority.
I mean, the, that, that goes to the larger problem, I think, of what, what we're getting at. And we may be, we may be getting granular here is, is, is my concern is that, um, you know, it's really a specific problem of, of people editing at the same time. And, uh, but, but really it's the idea that if there's a public, it's both a public meeting and a public record issue, right? Because it's, it's a public meeting if somebody's doing deliberative session outside of a public meeting, but it's also a public record, which is, you know, essentially in, in private, this, this public document's being, being modified. Um, and the public record issue won't be resolved till we have the, the, the public drive, um, issue resolved. But then, you know, I, I, I don't know if the idea of collaborative editing, you know, on Google Drive, eh, goes, might be too, too, too much for, and there's too many questions for volunteers if we should have a brighter line for that. Um, and just simply say, you know, i- as, as old fashioned as it may be, people would have to simply email drafts back and forth to each other as opposed to doing something on a Google Drive, uh, for editing.
So, right. Yes, I agree with you. I think that's what we're getting at is you cannot use Google Drive as an editing platform, only a place to save things.
Right. But I mean, with the idea of the language and purposes of collaborative edit, editing does suggest that there might be solo editing on, on this, or, you know, I, I guess the, the question is, is the collaborative editing? Because it would even be the idea of editing, you, you know, for example, if, if I went on to a document now and then in next day Anne does it, that's still collaborative editing. It's just, um, even if it's not simultaneous or, yeah, I, I think we just have to be very clear, especially give volunteers these bright lines so they don't get flummoxed by it.
So would y'all like me to take out the word collaborative? What are y'all, the collective thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's easier to say editing period.
That's fine.
Well, while she's making those edits, I think it's just, you know, maybe we need to, you know, you need to simplify our thinking. Like we're all clear that we can't deliberate issues by email. Right? That's one thing I think everyone's got now. So somebody brings up something and someone gives a counterpoint and you're, so Google Docs or collaborative editing is sort of the next technological advance from that, but it's still the same principle. It can't, just can't occur. Now, if one person is drafting something and sends it out for everyone else to look at and then be discussed at the next meeting, that happens all the time, I think. But we, it's just like when we send out an email, like if, you know, we, you all are really good at it. And I think councils over the years have really gotten much better at it, just saying, we can't deliberate this, you know, thanks for the info. We'll talk about it at the next meeting. And it's, it's really just the same principle.
Uh, Jack, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree. My, my hand kind of shot up when Dan said exchanging drafts by email because exchanging drafts by email is also something we're not supposed to be doing. And, you know, it's, it's so weird because this is not normal life. This is not how people in the twenty-first century conduct business, but it's something, you know, as a government body, this is something that we're required to adhere to. And, you know, in the committee, one of the committees I'm on has a lot of, uh, new members who have not been part of a process like this before. And it's, it's a struggle to make, make sure people, uh, can, can work, to, to make us all, make, make us work the way we're supposed to work.
Yeah, you know, there's, so there's one other point that I, I feel like is worth making here, which is that, um, I think pa- a part of the, the issue too is, is, uh, the, the quorum aspect of it. Like, if, just like I could talk with one of you or email one of you about, um, your thoughts on something, um, uh, that's fine. I just shouldn't do that with, with a more, with a quorum, right? So, could, could you theoretically have a collaborative document? Um, or email back and forth with the document with less than a quorum? I mean, my understanding is that you could do that. And maybe that's too, too fine a, a point, but you know, I, I, I also just sort of worry that people will be like, I can't use Google Docs at all, you know, and I, I just want to make sure that people are clear that it's not that we're saying you can't use Google Docs at all. Still like what is, what are the boundaries around that? It just couldn't be something that's shared with a, with a quorum of the group. Am I, am I wrong about that? Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it's just my sense that, you know, Google Docs is really a wonderful program for a particular purpose, which is somewhat at odds with what we're discussing here. Which is, it's great. We, we all use it at work where you have disparate groups of people. Everybody can go onto Google Docs, fix the same document and be working from a, a, a single copy. Um, which is exactly what we're not, can't do because of public meeting and public records law, um, he- here. And, and so I'm just wondering if, um, you know, as, as much as we may like to have this Google Doc as a repository, depository of, of documents, it seems like it's fraught with a certain amount of peril because it's, Google Docs is ultimately an editing platform. Um, and we have a distribution system, which is, that has to go out to the public, for, for a meeting. You know, the idea that we would have a, and, and we're also, also trying to discourage the idea that, you know, you have a seven-member board, so you assign three people to edit a document outside of a meeting. That's kind of a close end run to avoiding a public meeting discussion, which is if you have a committee that's primarily an editor of documents, ultimately the editing process has to take place during the meeting. And that may be where Google Docs could be extremely helpful. Is if you used Google, Google Docs during a live meeting. Especially since we're all doing these on Zoom. As long as somebody was projecting their Google Docs onto the, um, you know, open meeting screen. But, uh, at, at least as far as I, you know, w- what we don't want, and I think what the VLCT, VLCT's advice is, is we don't want that to be an end run around the public process.
Uh, yeah, uh, Jay and then Bill.
Well, I'll just jump in here, um, and say that, um, you, my takeaway from Kate's email, um, is, is not necessarily digging into the, um, capacity and value of Google Docs, but making sure that, that committees have a place where they can sort of establish that institutional memory. So I think we're talking, like, to me, like, she was talking about two different things. Yeah, yes, this is a new time and we tend to, we're now collaborative, collaborating more digitally as opposed to in person. So that creates a unique challenge, but ultimately what she, I felt was so important to her was that because there's so much turnover, because that the change happens so frequently with these committees across the board, that if, if there's not a central repository for minutes to refer to and established policies and established documents, then, then there's a problem. So, um, in terms of like the, the, you know, as new members come on, feeling this sense of like having to start over without really understanding exactly what's happening. So, um, I don't know if a new, this new platform provides an opportunity to, I, I don't know that we should be looking at Google Docs to be like a way to run committees, but more as a repository for established documents like minutes and policies and thinking about way that we can, that committees and the city can do their work online in a collaborative way that is still meeting, you know, the standards of open meeting laws.
Great. Um, and, uh, Cameron, if you wouldn't mind, um, stopping to share your screen just so I can see everybody easier. Awesome. Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I got a few, few thoughts here. Um, number one, a subcommittee of a committee is still subject to the public records law and the open meeting law. So a committee of seven that creates a subcommittee of three, that subcommittee is also required to follow the law. So that is not a legitimate way to get around, um, to get around, not that we want to get around. So that's number one. Number two, Google Docs has a lot of, and is the mayor well, knows well, I'm not an expert at it, but it has a lot of things it can do. The only thing we're really concerned about is we've talked about is sort of people group editing, whether it's live or sequentially. I'll point out, so, so this isn't an anti-Google Docs thing, right? Microsoft Word, you can do the same thing. Multiple people can edit the same doc. You can do the red lines. You can go in, add your comments. Um, you know, I'm sure there are any number of other programs. It's not, this isn't, this isn't software specific. This is activity specific. You know, if you want to store your documents, I have no doubt, and, and of course it's not perfect. We have a lot of committees and a lot of volunteers. I have not, you know, I'll just pick on a local good guy. No doubt there's a whole bunch of treeboard documents on John Snell's computer. Right? And it's not that he, you know, he's doing anything wrong, but that's where they are. And if he wants to set those up so that people can see them as a resource, great. That, that, you know, and, and yes, ideally all those should be hosted by the city. All those should be on the city's website. We're working on that technology. It's going to take a huge amount of work to get all those things from all those chairs and all those people. But it can be done. The only issue that we're talking about with regard to the open meeting law and the public records law is active editing outside of meetings. And that's, that's what we're trying to prevent. And, and this isn't new. I mean, we've, we've, we've already been doing that with email. We've already been doing it with other things. I mean, I think this is what we're, but it's, we've seen it happening and so we asked for an opinion. And I, again, I understand why. Nobody's trying to beat the system. It's just easy. And we have to work remotely. And it's all those reasons. I think what we're asking for is a clear statement from the council that this is the law. This is our ex, our policy expectation that you cannot do this. We know it's, we know it's convenient. We have to follow the open meeting law. And so therefore you have to, you cannot do joint editing. That's what we're looking for. I think everything else is just overly complicating the issue. When you read Kate's email, she says, we don't edit live. We know we're not supposed to do that. We use it for storage and all these other things. All those things she said are fine. And she said, I don't edit. Kate, in theory, based on her. And she said, I don't edit. Kate, in theory, based on her email, would have no problem with what we're proposing. This, this is completely consistent with her use and that committee's use. And it should be consistent with every other committee's use.
Uh, Connor, go ahead.
The front porch forum is mentioned explicitly. I imagine that's because you could have the majority of us debating policy in that format, which wouldn't be a properly warm. Okay, that's, yeah, great.
And that was an expert. I think we talked about that at one of our council retreats, that that was something we wouldn't, maybe, I can't remember if it's pre you or not.
Okay, so I, I'm fine with this language as it exists, as it's been amended now. Um, other thoughts? Donna, go ahead.
Well, I'm being really dense. I don't understand how you can use this as a depository when I, as a public system citizen, can't get to it unless I'm part of that committee and I have that link.
Well, it's the same way that, so my computer at work has all of my work documents for all the committees that I help, right? Those are all public documents, but you can't get to them. I have to get to them. It's the same concept there where you just have to ask for it. You know, this committee wants to include it in their minutes. They can. It's, it's, it's just a link to a saved.
But they're not putting it on the website. I depend on the website to have minutes.
I know, we're gonna get there one day. It's just not there yet.
I guess you mean it, so committees aren't supposed to be posting their minutes and agenda to the website?
No, the, no, the minutes and the agenda are on the website. I'm sorry. I thought you meant like a document.
No, no, just the minutes and agenda because she talks about that too. I mean, okay. It's just the extra documents.
Right.
Yes.
And, and those are all still subject to public records requests. Ideally, in a perfect world, they'd be stored in a way that the public can look at them all the time and committee members and else, but.
Kate and others do talk about their minutes and agenda being in this depository and not on the website. So that's all I'm, I'm just wanting to clarify. Those are still expected to be on the website.
In fact, that's also required.
I know, but it's not happening.
I, 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 I want to check on that because I suspect it may also be there. Anyway, we can, we can check. Lauren, did you have something?
Uh, yeah, just really briefly. Um, I mean, I'm starting to see more and more on my committees that people are putting links to like the Google Drive, uh, like the police review committee has been doing this right into the minutes and the agenda. So if somebody went to that, it's actually becoming more accessible where, you know, if you can find the agenda, then you can get to the documents the same way we can get to city council documents. So I'm actually hopeful it will actually make documents more accessible to the public if we use it right and well. I don't, Cameron, like the version you have up, just two words, um, the second paragraph, I, you probably, you just will need to like look at it with fresh eyes. Like there were like a couple of extra words, and I think you had like the word Google Docs and, and related, which might mean like we're somehow preferencing Google products, maybe like, um, similar products to Google Docs or something, just so that we're not somehow.
Changed the word related to similar.
Don't, don't need to become vendors for, for Google.
No, not at all, not at all.
They, that was it. And then there were two, two needed in the second paragraph, that near the bottom in one sentence that I think one needs to go, but it looked, looked good though.
Oh, yes, thank you. You're right. Thank you. Those two things have been changed.
Okay. Um, other thoughts? Okay, is there a, a motion regarding this language?
Move that we adopt it as we've amended it tonight.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion about this? Okay, all right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. And opposed. Okay, all right. Well, thank you. You know, this feels like a, a, you know, such a modern problem, especially during COVID. But yeah, I know it's important that we, that we, yeah, follow the law. It's good. Thank you. Uh, all right, so with that, we are, we're gonna do our council reports, uh, and then we have a couple of executive sessions to do. So, uh, so we're gonna jump to that. Uh, first to, to council reports. Uh, Donna, are you okay with going first? Oh, you're, you're muted though.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm going to pass. I'm gonna take my break. I'll be back.
Oh, okay. All right. Fair enough. Uh, okay. Um, who is next? I guess it's Connor.
Yeah, not much. I, I mentioned the bill, uh, was contacted by a couple of restaurants, just wondering like what the deal is like, when they can open up and have like a parklet or something like that. So it, it sounds like we'll get that on a future, uh, agenda item. I was asking like, so what's the earliest you would open? They were like, yeah, the second the snowplows get off, we're, we're setting up tables if we can, so. So I, I, I think that would be a good chat to have. I, Bill, did you say that maybe next meeting or?
I was gonna bring that up in my manager's report.
Uh, right. Perfect. Thanks, William.
Okay, Jay.
Uh, yeah, thanks. Just a quick note of thanks. I know it's come up, come up a little bit before the weeks passed, but acknowledging, uh, the work that the Parks Department is doing around uh, grooming and making ski trails accessible for the community. And, um, I think one of the things that I'm learning from from the work that, that Alec and others are doing is this, the incredible potential of, of collaborating with uh, groups within the city and seeing what, um, ORN, Onion River Nordic, Dan Voshin and, and Brian Carlson and their work with, um, with Alec to be able to share resources and be able to create this amazing trail network that goes into, you know, runs through, through all of our parks. The city, up the hill, up North Street, and then all the way over to U 32. It just, uh, uh, with, with that level of, um, that energy and commitment to it. Um, I just, I think it's just a great model that we can be looking at for, for other projects looking ahead.
Yeah, great. Um, Dan.
Sure. Um, as Lauren indicated earlier, the legislative or the lobbying committee, uh, met last week and we, we talked about a couple of different priorities, but I would put out to both our body and maybe to the city in general that, you know, with the increase of funding, uh, or potential for funding that's coming from the federal government, we would be well served to start thinking about projects that we could apply for this potential, some of these funds that were coming. Um, in, in part, you know, it seems thoughtful. We should think about what our city is going to look like post-COVID. And, and spend some time to prioritize those projects that could help us as a city survive and thrive in, in a post-COVID world where we might not have a full array of state workers coming into town like we did before.
Yeah. Uh, Jack.
Passing tonight.
Lauren.
Uh, yeah, only thing I wanted to mention, um, the Social and Economic Justice Advisory Committee. We have had a couple of people needing to step off for various commitments and reasons. So always would love, um, if anyone's interested in applying for that. I think it's just rolling open. Um, but we're doing some really interesting work right now and starting outreach to, uh, specific, uh, groups of Montpelier residents to get input from people who often, you know, aren't heard from at our city council meetings or in city government processes. So I think there's a lot of really interesting work that, you know, we've all been working on for a while. So it'll be, it'll be a fun time to get involved. Um, so I hope people will, uh, consider, uh, applying for it. That's it. Thanks.
Connor, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I, I forgot one thing. Uh, and John might talk about this in his report, but I, I was watching House Government Operations today. And I saw, uh, the non-US citizens voting bill was introduced. It's, uh, H 177. Uh, introduced by Warren Kitzmiller there. He did a good job presenting today. Uh, but we should really lean on House Government Operations to get that out and get that over the finish line. If remember, it stalled in the Senate last year. Um, so I, I think we really have an obligation for the voters to, uh, hit it and would recommend anybody who's listening to contact legislators. Uh, let's get it done. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, okay, so I, I have a few things on my list here. Uh, you may be aware that all the mayors of the state, uh, get together and talk about their own legislative agendas uh, in order for anything to make it onto the Mayor's Coalition Legislative Agenda. Six out of the eight mayors have to agree to it. Uh, so I, if, in case you're interested, I'm happy to, um, pass that around so you, um, know what we were, uh, were chatting about. Second thing is I, I think it's, it's probably worth mentioning that Burlington is considering a responsible contractors' ordinance similar, very, very similar to the one that we are, that, that we approved. And, uh, so I just wanna, and so Connor and I both, uh, spoke to a committee, uh, about that, um, the other day. And I think it's, I, anyway, just patting you all on the back, yay for going first. Yay for leading, uh, in that way. Um, and sort of similarly, just a heads up. I know I've, I've been talking about this, um, Home Energy Information Ordinance for a while now, and I think we're, we're aiming to have it on a council agenda, uh, for March 10th, uh, I think is, um, which I, it will be the first, uh, agenda after town meeting day. Um, anyway, so that's just a, just a heads up about that. And yeah, I guess that is it for me. So uh, right. So John, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, um, hopefully you all, or at least most of you who've seen your ballots today, they should be, I got mine. Uh, they seem to be hitting mailboxes today for, for Town Meeting Day, which is great. We're actually, I'd hope they'd be out about a week earlier, but it is what it is. Uh, we're actually at the beginning or ahead of the game for most of the other communities, so I feel okay about that. Reminder that the whole idea is to try to limit in-person voting. We do, obviously we, we will be open for in-person voting. Usual hours, usual place, but, uh, you know, you've got the, the return mailers. We've got the Dropbox. Get them back if you can, ideally that way, but just make sure you vote one way or the other. The turnaround this time, we've only got about two and a half weeks till the election, so that's really, really different. But, uh, there they are. Uh, let's see, what else should I mention? I should mention that, uh, property tax payments are due on the 15th normally, but that's a holiday, so the 16th is going to be acceptable. Uh, in regards to the clerk's lawsuit that you all, you know, thankfully made a supportive, uh, statement on. I was actually subpoenaed in that, um, because the plaintiffs thought I was being mean to them. Uh, I was sworn in and my relevance was deemed irrelevant by the, by the judge, so I didn't get to say anything. But halfway through the day, the plaintiff just withdrew it. It wasn't going anywhere. So that's, that's all done. So, and thank you for your all help, your all's help. Uh, legislatively, um, yeah, and first of all, in terms of what, uh, Connor was saying about, um, the non-citizen voting, comes back around to the Senate. I hope it does. That was a very supportive Senate Government Operations Committee. They tried to get ahead of the game last time with, with positive hearings on it. The only reason it didn't get any farther was that was the decision made by, by leadership, by Senator Ash really to bottle it up in the Rules Committee. We have new leadership over there now. So, uh, hopefully it's a whole new ballgame and we'll see how it goes. Uh, finally, I have once again been in, I've spent a lot of my, my time in Zoom and Senator, Senate Gov- Government Operations the last couple of weeks, and they're just moving, trucking along on this sort of omnibus gigantic election bill. But it looked like we were gonna get our ability to, um, have a mail-in election was looking like it was going to be curtailed because the schools wouldn't have the authority to do it themselves. So either we split up our ballot for the first time and mail out our own, which is just not something that's gonna happen. It's not what folks are looking for. But I think uh, that I planted the seed today that when it comes around in its final wording next, uh, the end of next week, we might have the wiggle room back in. So anyways, I'm hopeful that the bill doesn't have the effect of keeping us from doing, uh, a mail-in election when the idea is to empower towns to do it if they choose. So cross your fingers on that. And I think that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Bill?
Uh, yeah, just as was mentioned, we do have a holiday on the 15th, so those of us with Monday gatherings, we can either reschedule or pass. Uh, so Connor mentioned earlier the Parklet Ordinance. You may recall that we, last year, we did a substitute ordinance. We, we did a temporary ordinance that, that uh, overrode our existing ordinance until October 25th and then went away and the existing ordinance went back into place. And I have also had a couple of requests from restaurants and, you know, I think when we did this last year, we assumed that this would be the only summer that we, we need to do this. That's obviously not going to be the case, and I think it worked pretty well uh, last summer. Uh, so I would suggest that we consider reenacting the, the same temporary ordinance for this season. And I think we can set whatever start date we want. Uh, I would, I would think it would be, you know, I know they want to do it immediately, but I think it would maybe be after the, the winter parking regulations end or, you know, the alternate, those kinds of things. And, you know, the, the old ordinance was May 1st to October 25th. I don't know, you know, but anyway, I, I'll put, if people are interested in this, I'll put this on the agenda for the next meeting and, um, we can have a hearing and, and either approve it then or do two hearings. But it, it would just be putting back what we had before that automatically expired. Uh, and I think that's it. I did get my ballots in the mail today. That's all I've got.
Okay. All right, so, um, leave that as the end of our, uh, regular business. So we have, uh, two executive, uh, sessions. Uh, one, uh, about the, uh, discussion of the potential land acquisition. And then, uh, we, I, I, do we, I don't know if we need to, we probably do need to come out of executive session after that and then go back into executive session, um, for the city manager's review. Uh, and we may, um, come out of, uh, that executive session as well to, um, have a vote, uh, but that is, um, all, uh, yeah, that, that's also, it's all a possibility. Uh, so yeah, I think, I think that's where we're headed, unless, unless you think we don't need to come out of executive session in between those times. I think we probably do though.
Well, I, I mean, I defer to the, the lawyers here, but it would seem to me that as long as you say that's what you're going into executive session for, uh, for both purposes.
Then we can do both.
And that you're inviting, you know, Alec Ellsworth in for the first. And then we can take note of when Alex departs, which would essentially signify when the second one started.
Right, right. That, that sounds good to me. Um, all right.
Unless, unless there's action to be taken after the first one, then you may want to come out and clean that up and then go back in and do. I don't know if there will be, but just if that's the case.
Yeah. Uh, Jack, go ahead.
You're on mute.
I move pursuant to uh, one V S A, section 330, that we go into exec, 313, sorry, that we go into exec- executive session for uh, two reasons. One, to discuss negotiating or securing a real estate purchase or lease options. And two, to consider the, uh, evaluation of a public employee.
Second.
Okay, and, and your understanding is that we're inviting, uh, Alec into that, the first section?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. And we may, oh, Donna, go ahead.
I was just questioning, I took my little break. Is there gonna be a break?
I think that's a
Before executive session or after we go into executive session?
Other, other thoughts? Would, would people like a break?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, um, alright, so. Five minutes, alright.
Can I ask a quick question too, before we go?
Yes, uh, go ahead, Alec.
Um, I'd love to invite our, uh, Parks AmeriCorps member and who's been helping me with the project and, um, also. The Parks Commission rep to the discussion if that needs to go in the motion or if that's just okay and I can send the link.
Uh, I think it's like.
Who are they?
They need names. Uh, Parks AmeriCorps member is Benjamin Grass and Stephanie Hunt is the, uh, rep for both commissions.
I, I'm happy with amending my motion to include those two names.
Okay. Same with the second.
Um, I also just wanna be thoughtful about the time here because, um, I wanna make sure that we have enough time to. To have, um, healthy conversations about, um, both of these items, um. So anyway, just, just making a, a mental note about that, uh, so. Uh, there's a, been a motion and a second, um, and just also noting that we may come out. Uh, at the end with a vote, so, um. Alright, uh, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed. Okay, so we are gonna, um, duck out of this call and, uh. For the discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed. Okay, and is there another motion?
So I'll, I'll move. Oh, sorry, I, uh, I'll move that we authorize the, um, city staff to negotiate. Um, for an option agreement concerning, um, the Heeny Parcel. Um, in conformance with the discussion that we had in executive session and I will also move. That the, um. Uh, that the city manager begin to draft a letter of support. Um, from the count, to be reviewed and approved by the council, um, to assist in the grant. Uh, process that the Parks Commission, uh, Parks Director is currently undergoing. Uh, with the US Forest Service.
Our second. And just to be clear, that is one motion, right?
Hmm.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed. Okay, awesome. Thank you, um, for all your work on this and, and getting us all that information and, um. Uh, yeah, look forward to hearing about how it goes.
Yeah, thanks all. Good night.
Bye.
Have a good night. Um, alright, and so for the rest of us, um. I just wanna recognize that it is ten o'clock. Are you, are we, we're still game to, to have this conversation? Or, I mean, we do have the option, I suppose, if we had to, we could, um, wait until the next meeting. But then that's our, that's our last, uh, meeting of this particular session, um. Thoughts? I'm down if you are. But, also I feel like, um, yeah.
I have, I have a question. Did you email us a summary of what was said?
Oh, I did not.
Evaluation wise?
I did not email you a summary. I do have that though, and I can send it to you.
Okay, that would be helpful whenever we're gonna talk about it.
Okay, um, Bill, what, I feel like you've got some, like if, if, uh, if you're, you know. If it's too late and we're topping out, then, you know, we can do it later, but up, what, what do you think?
Yeah, we could either do it at the next meeting or we could set up a, you know, a time just for this. Sometimes we've done that, um. Or we can go now. I mean, I'm, I'm game, but I, I also want to make sure you're all up for it and, and, um, if people haven't seen all the comments that.
Yeah, I, I'm fine to do, to do that, to put it off either to a separate, specific time or to put it with the next meeting. Um, I think it's, I, I guess I would just, I would just hate to, you know, feel like we're up against people going to sleep. You know, like that's, that's never good. Um, uh, Jack, yeah.
The first time this has happened.
I. I think it would, it would be useful to the discussion to not hold it until we get, uh, the summary of.
Sure.
Of what people have done, so that, that militates in favor of doing it next time. I don't know what the agenda for our next. Meeting looks like, except that I know that we already put some things onto it that. That may or may not take a, a long time like the zoning thing.
Um, so we'd have the zoning public hearing. And the Parklet Ordinance, hopefully those wouldn't take too long. You're gonna be getting a briefing on all the dispatch issues, um. Including the console, but also all the other projects that are going on.
Good.
Um, we talked about having a legislative update, possibly inviting our legislators. I don't know, can, if the committee members, if that's what you're thinking. Or just us going over what was pending for bills. Mayor may not have a proposal on, uh, Montpelier Development Corporation. We've had one conversation, I don't know if we'll have a. Recommendation by then or not. I'm just looking at my, and that's, that's the list right now.
It's not too bad, I don't think.
Yeah. I mean, my.
We always fill our time and we run late, even on the slimmest of agendas. We're just terrible. I'd rather give Bill a specific time and come in and do it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, no, I, I, I think that's, that's fair. I feel like it's somehow easier to schedule. Extra times if there are executive sessions, um, somehow, just to. Makes it easier, but we can also try to tack it on to the next. Uh, meeting and then if it doesn't, um, if, if for whatever reason we, we don't have time, then we can schedule a, a specific outside meeting. Unless people have a preference and would prefer to just have a, a separate, uh, meeting.
Just to be clear, you really, I mean, you know, if, if for some reason it doesn't work on the twenty-fourth. You know, we really have till the following Tuesday.
Yeah.
Do it, uh, technically it's supposed to be done in the month of February, but even if you allow for March first, you know, that would be. You know, you'd be, eh, with a weekend in there.
Yeah, that's true. Alright, well, maybe, well, what, what's people, what are your preference, what's your preference team? Do, do a separate time or try to fit it into the twenty-fourth?
How about this? How about Bill or Cameron or Mary do a, do a doodle? If there's a time to do it before the twenty-fourth, if not, we do it on the twenty-fourth.
So just quickly, what about next Wednesday? Does that?
Works for me.
Yeah.
Uh, at six thirty?
Or, you know, whatever. We could do it earlier or later if it's more convenient for people.
It's fine with me.
Um, tentatively, that should work for me, so.
Six thirty next Wednesday?
Six thirty next Wednesday.
Comes up from everybody?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. That was easy.
Okay, and I'll, um, I'll send out those, uh. Those cumulative results to everybody, so everybody's got, uh, those comments.
Um, remember, don't work on them separate, you know, as collaboratively.
That's right. Yep, okay, alright, well, um, in that case, I think we are done. Right, that's the end of our, our business and so I don't think there's anything else we need to do, um, so I'm gonna.
Probably go back to executive session and then, and, you know, vote to set this meeting.
I'm not leaving the Zoom room again.
Uh, alright, so without objection, I'm gonna consider this meeting adjourned, ten fourteen.
Alright.
Alright. Awesome. Alright, well, have a good night, everybody.
You too.
Goodnight.
Next time.